Hello again, I'm Robert Rip from Massapequa. I guess, just before I begin, I just want to ask a question in relation to the statement you provided earlier in regards to the SRB concessions. I'd like to know, if you could tell me, if there are no longer any sings involved in, or have any, if there is no sing interest in the SRB corporation, that's what I'm assuming is happening, would you be able to tell us who the new, or did Mr. Chalk purchase everything? Or did he tell us who the new people are?
You know, I'm really reluctant to go past the statement, by the way, I'm not trying to be funny when I say this, when I, when you say there were no sings involved, sing's a very common name.
Correct.
Okay, I was trying to be cute, but, but the statement, I think, said very clearly that the sing we're referring to is horrendous sing, the prior, well, shouldn't say, yeah, well, the prior concessionaire and members of his family, just to be clear for the record. I don't know that, those names are being vetted as we speak, and I'm looking for a little help here, probably not a good idea to give the names out, but we're expecting the results, I think, very shortly, at which time they will reveal all the names. We're certainly not going to keep the names under wraps before we go into, before we pass on the proposal.
Okay, I just have one last question on that. If we have a new entity which is proposing continuing on with the concessions, why are we giving them like first crack at it, why aren't we just doing an RFP and taking bids from more than one right now?
I think the, we're not giving them a first crack, I think they've came, they have demonstrated during the period of time they were there, I think I said it in the statement, they did a good job, and they have come forward with a proposal which I think at an absolute minimum bears looking at. I don't know if you want to go through the five steps, I'll go through the four again, but they are very, very attractive, whether or not they pan out, whether or not ultimately the board thinks they're all that attractive, we'll decide, but we do have the legal authority to, you know, handle it this way.
Okay, thanks.
But keep in mind, keep in mind, I just want to be clear about this, all the statement talks about is that the town has agreed to look at their proposal and consider it. I would, by no stretch of the imagination would it rule out that ultimately we might appoint an emergency concessionaire and proceed with RFPs, that is very much alive and in the offing as well, so, but I think in light of all of the turmoil and chaos, it certainly seems like an intelligent thing to do to at least review that proposal and see whether or not they can really deliver on those five orders, if you will.
Thank you, thank you very much. Before I begin, I also would like to express my gratitude and my thanks to Mr. McKeon and Mr. Pinta. I understand the fortitude that it took for you to express your position. You mentioned a little bit earlier about the hubbub, Lou, you called it, and I just want to just touch briefly on this also. You know, the residents in Oyster Bay, they, you know, you only have so many forums to gain, for lack of a better word, let's call it intelligence, what's happening in the community, and, you know, recently you've been pretty close-mouthed, or closed-mouth, I guess it might be, with your comments to the press, and I think the perception a lot of people got was that it literally took, you know, a letter from the district attorney to you for the town to make an announcement on what was going on, Mr. Ibelido, and that's, you know, that's really all I have to say on that, but...
Well, but hold on, hold on, what you have to say is inaccurate, that's not what happened. First of all, any reporter who calls me gets a return call, with an exception, and that exception is, I'm not going to get into here. So, I spend quite a bit of time talking to reporters all day long. As far as what happened in the case of the letter from the district attorney, the district attorney was doing her job, she wrote a, I have no qualms with that, she wrote a letter to us saying, "Are you aware that upon Mr. Ibelido's and Commissioner Ibelido's plea that his office is vacated at that moment in time?", and we wrote back that, yes, we were, we were aware, and it was all discussed, but I think, the problem I have is this, I don't know how to characterize it, but like every five minutes you get a call, somebody thinks they saw Mr. Ibelido, or they think they saw his shadow in the hallway, or, "Why didn't you change this immediately?". You know, this is a very significant development, in the evolution of, and in the operation, I should say, of the Department of Planning and Development, I think, I think it was Councilwoman Alessia who said a little bit earlier, this is a very, very significant change. The plea was entered on Tuesday, the office was vacated on Tuesday, Mr. Ibelido gets paid only until Tuesday, and under the appropriate, the prevailing provisions of the public officers law, that's it, no other action had to be taken. So, I'm not really sure what, I'm not really sure what all the concern was afterwards, that's where I'm not clear.
That's what I'm trying to explain to you, at least in my opinion.
But what was the concern?
At least in my opinion, I can't speak for all residents, my opinion was that it appeared that you didn't release that information until, until recently, until today, and, and what I saw as just, as just an individual was that the town, through their spokespeople, weren't making any statements except for you allegedly waiting to review court documents, and the impression that I got, and maybe other people got this too, was that the town never came out and said, hey, this is, there were two members, excuse me, there were two board members that did, but everybody else was mute, or moot, muted, and then the impression I got was that, I mean, we didn't hear the town's position until after the district attorney addressed it by writing that letter.
Oh, I think, I, maybe we have a different view of things. I thought the two town board members, Joe and Tommy, I thought they said that, in their opinion, the commissioner should be terminated. He had it already, there was, I think, I think the impression was created in the public, not through the board members, by the way, I think the impression was created in the public that the town had to do some affirmative act to terminate him, perhaps wait till the next town board meeting and have a vote and so on and so forth. That wasn't the case. The prevailing law says that at the time he entered the plea, the office is vacant, that's really, really the end of the story. Now, in fairness to Commissioner Ibelido, and in fairness to the town and its residents, I think you have to, the plea was entered, no one was aware the plea was going to be entered that morning, you know, out of the blue comes word that a plea was entered, now we have to review that and find out what is the impact of that plea, does it fall within the ambit of the public officers law, and indeed it did, and in fact, we confirm that. There was no action to be taken by the town board. It would, I'd see, I would agree with you if we didn't have public officers law, and somebody said, "Hey, your commissioner has pled guilty to a felony, what are you going to do about it?". And then if we sat there and said, "I don't know what we're going to do about it", or some people said, "Hey, we're going to terminate him immediately", yeah, but that wasn't the case, the case was, at the time the commissioner entered the plea, it was over, there was nothing to do. So, I don't know, maybe we're looking at it differently, but, I'm pretty comfortable with the way I see it. I'm looking at the lawyer, Frank, you want to add something?
The letter that we received from Ms. Singers basically said, "Please confirm", and we called and we confirmed.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not disputing...
I don't, I, the supervisor mentioned, I don't, I'm trying to understand, you know, you know, what you're trying to say, but she wrote to us, "Please confirm", we picked up the phone, office is vacated by the Ostate law, and we wrote to her, that's it.
I think we confirmed it, right?
I'm not disputing that anyone in the town didn't act accordingly, do what they're supposed to do, you just mentioned, I don't get why everybody, why there's a hubbub, I'm just telling you, my, like, the opinion that I got when I read it was that there wasn't a decision made until after, that's all I'm saying, that's just my one man's opinion, that's it, so...
And although you're sharing my opinion with you, listen, I, I look, but let's not, let's be careful with each other, I understand the consternation that ensues after you hear a guilty plea to a federal felony taken by a commissioner, I get it, I mean, I'm, you know, but all I'm saying is that we have a responsibility, we don't just shoot from the hip and guess that what we're supposed to do, or, hey, let's all, let's call a meeting in the town board right now and, and, you know, terminate him, we need to find out what the law says, and in this case, the law said, the moment you took the plea, the office is vacated, and that's exactly the position that we took.
Thank you, thank you very much. Just to get into, before I begin with asking you if you want to answer some of the questions I had last week, I just want to bring your attention that, you know, the town has responded to the two FOIL requests that I had the court order entitling me to see, but it's been, it's been more than a month, and I have 20 other, approximately 20 other, I mean, Mr. Spelker knows, I have about 20 other FOIL requests, and I don't understand, it, quite frankly, it's not at my doing that they've been backed up like this, they weren't answered, they weren't answered, even responded to, half of them at all, so, I just want to remind you that, you know, I'm hoping that you're going to get that stuff together for me, I'm not going to have to continue in court about that.
Okay. You want to talk about the questions from the last...
Yeah, I just wanted to bring your attention that, on the town's website, this is the second meeting that, and I believe you haven't posted the actual resolutions like you did, you have the list of the resolutions, and you started posting them, and then I also just want to touch on...
Wait, we didn't do it?
This week? Oh, I checked yesterday, I didn't see.
There's a period of time when they're being conformed in between, right, they're up as proposed, and then they have to be taken down and put back up.
The whole thing, I guess, you did, you did a few meetings ago, you showed everything.
They were up by noon yesterday.
I'm sorry, I apologize, that was my mistake.
That's okay, Rob.
But I want to talk about the video and the live streaming, I don't know, I mean, you know, we have the facilities that, I mean, I do it with a little hand thing, somebody could be videoing in the back, and it could be streamed on the town's website, I don't know why we're waiting to do that.
I'm happy to address it, if that's okay with the supervisor, I'm happy to address that, we have a committee in place working into the most efficient way to do it, and it's something that we intend to do, I would say, in very short order, there are some questions as to the best equipment to use and the best method to stream, and as you know, when you take video with a camcorder, you can edit it and change how people hear and what they're saying, so you want to make sure that when we livestream, that everything appears exactly as it's said on the record.
You know, I agree with you 100%, you have a very valid point, I agree.
Who's this shot?
I just wanted to inform you that, you know, I stopped up at the town receiver taxes and Nassau County assessment, and I was speaking to the press about the cleanups, the property cleanups, and it really looks as if, I mean, ballpark figure's like three quarters of a million dollars, and it looks as if the town is doing the cleanups and assessing it, and that's it, nobody's keeping track, record of anything, nobody has any record of any money ever reaching, this is the answers I got from your assessment.
Oh, everybody, slow down, calm down. I thought I addressed this at the last meeting, I thought Mr. Stefanich gave an answer, the controller is in the office, Bob, did you want to, I thought I saw you hand you up today.
Anything that gets put on the tax rolls gets paid by Nassau County, and Nassau County goes back after, after the homeowners, again, if it's put on the tax rolls, we get the money.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that's, one day we're going to get the money.
No, no, I think... We get the money the following February is when we put it on the tax rolls, done. We get the money, and then whatever the public, who is property owner, whatever deal they have with Nassau County, to pay them, three years, five years down the road.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
But the key is, the key is, everybody must be calm.
Okay.
You see how it works? Okay, go ahead, Robert.
Thank you. I just want to bring up one, one point from last week, I asked a question, and the response I got was "operational law",
And you don't like, why don't you like that expression?
I didn't say, in my gift, I said, I asked a question. I was asking questions in regard to Ms. Swanson's garage, and you're explaining that by "operational law", and I'm not, you know, I'm not an attorney, so at that point, I just had to write it down and go home and look it up. Okay, "operational law, the manner in which an individual acquires certain rights or liabilities through no, through no act or cooperation of his or own, of his or own, but merely by the application of the established legal rules to a particular transaction." So, what you're basically saying is that if I bought my neighbor's house, I wouldn't have to do anything, it would just automatically, everything would just switch over by, by operational law, to me, right?
How mayor can you...
If you were a real estate attorney, or any attorney, and I came to you and I said, "I'm going to buy my neighbor's house, what do I have to do to put everything in my name", would you tell me, "Oh, don't worry about operational law"?
No, I, no, you have to fire, no, 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 slow down, I don't think it's quite that broad. I think the definition you read is a good definition, I think all we were talking about, Al, did you want to add something? You look like you're boiling over there.
Because it goes all the way back to my days when I was secretary of the zoning board, it used to come up all the time in those days. The, the, Rob Rip did an excellent job of quoting the definition of the term you used, but it was applying to, no further action was needed to accomplish the purpose of merging the two lots in common ownership, not to imply that he didn't need to obtain and file a deed to get ownership of the land, but once he did that, or any purchaser did that and filed that deed, by operational law, from that point forward, the properties were merged for his own.
Correct, for his own.
We also used a similar term earlier, we don't have to revisit all of that, obviously there were things that led up to the operation of lawmaking and office making, but from the time that previous action happened, nothing further was needed to accomplish the purpose.
Right. Robert, I, I wasn't being funny last time when I said it, and I will, I'll arrange it for you without any cost or expense to you, seriously, I will set you up with a prominent real estate attorney who, who has done work in the town, oh, and we've ruled before and against him, and sit and talk with him, maybe, maybe he could explain it better than, we just don't seem to be getting through to you.
Well, the thing is, Mr. Supervisor, is, I spent a couple hours in Nassau County Tax Assessor's Office since last meeting, and this is the way that they explained it to me, they sold me Ms. Swanson's parcel ID cards, right? Let me just step back one second, I did therefore request Ms. Swanson's building file, and I got a couple of documents that were in there, one is dated August 9, 2011, it's headed from Commissioner Frederick Ibelido Department of Planning and Development, but it's signed by Donna Swanson, and this is letters to Patricia Kniff, it says, "Kindly pre, kindly provide the owner sign with a compliance letter for the following properties after the proposed lot line change. A certified copy of proposed subdivision survey is attached here to be of convenience", it's got all the appropriate lot lines, "Thank you for your attention, this matter very truly owes Donna Swanson", and then, a month later, September 1, 2011, I have a letter that's from Commissioner Ibelido to Ms. Swanson, and what this says is, "The department has never seen a few requests regarding the above section block and lot numbers, please be advised that the properties are located within an R-10 residential zone. The composite survey prepared by John P. Ferantello, land survey dated July 14 to 11, indicates the transferring of a portion of lots 596 and 571 to lot 578. After reviewing the proposed partitioning survey, it is determined that both lots will conform with the town of Oyster Bay zoning ordinance, however, the Nassau County Planning Commission should be contacted whenever property lines are altered." Okay, now, I took this and I went up to the Nassau County Assessments Office, what they explained to me is, as far as Nassau County is concerned, these lots are separate, they were never merged, they were never grouped in any way, they also explained to me that the town controls the production of the tax bill, and it doesn't matter how many tax bills she has, you can bill it twice, you can bill it once, the bottom line is that these are separate lots, and it's clear, at least to me from these letters, that Ms. Swanson knew that she was making a proposition to the town, that she was going to do this construction with the intention of merging these lots legally through the county, and she was advised as such by the commissioner in this letter, I'm just looking at you, and it's my opinion that, you can, you can tell me till the sky turns orange that there's merge for zoning and there's merge for whatever, you'll never convince me that the lots weren't, are not private.
But, no, that's right, you're saying it doesn't matter what you say, but say it anyway.
Thank you, thank you.
They are merged for zoning purposes, no matter how many tax lots there are, to go to the tactic, and ask them about merger is going to be wrong, they don't propose to do that. The reason that a letter was written to the planning department, it up front, whenever property is subdivided, or in this case is lot line altered, has to be approved by the Nassau County Planning Commission. The Nassau County Planning Commission, rightly, checks with the local jurisdiction, in this case, the town of Oyster Bay, to make sure that, in the case of a subdivision, the new lots created, or in the case of an altered lot, that the resulting lots after the subdivision or lot line change leave you with conforming lots, that's what had to be confirmed here. If Ms. Swanson, in theory, had proposed to buy so much of the neighbor's lot that the result lot that the neighbor was left with would be too small to be a conforming lot, the town would have advised the planning commission of that, and they would not have approved the transaction.
All right, Robert, let's move on.
Okay, thank you. I live down in Nassau Shores, Massapequa, I, I don't know why they call it Nassau Shores, but for some reason down in South Massapequa, they have a bunch of neighborhoods, Billmore Shores, you live Massapequa.
Well, actually, believe it or not, more neighborhoods have nominal designations, but they don't, they tend not to publicize it, believe it or not, not everyone, but...
The name of subdivision.
Yeah, some of them publicize it by signage, others don't.
Well, we don't really have any subdivision or anything, we just have like a neighborhood, but...
I would, I would agree with what you're saying, Bar Harbor, Harbor Green.
Yeah, so anyway...
The gates of Massapequa.
Well, I moved back, back there in 93, I found out that I had private sanitation, that the town didn't pick up my sanitation, and I didn't really think much of it when I moved in, I called the sanitation company and I signed up, and over the years, I've had, you know, problems where, where I wasn't satisfied with the service, what I wanted to do was, what I wanted to do, actually, what I'm saying is, periodically, over the last 20 years, I must have called like half a dozen times, and I'd call up clerk's office and I'd say, "Hey, can you tell me why the town isn't picking up my garbage?". And they, they would say, "Oh, you have to talk to this guy, sanitation", and the bottom line is, you get a referral to Winter Brothers, which is the sanitation that is picking up my garbage. Now, I just happened to call again...
Rob, how long have you known the contract with Winter Brothers, since 93?
I don't know, I don't know how long I've been on the contract with Winter Brothers.
One year?
No, 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 I don't, I don't think Winter Brothers had the whole contract the whole time, I think there was somebody in there before that, I'm pretty sure.
So, were you, were you under contract with a private carter since 1993?
Yeah. Why do you ask?
I'm just curious as to what's evolved since 1993, what history has been...
Oh, well, let me move this way.
You said you've been under contract since 93 with a private carter?
I've periodically canceled my service with a private, with a private carter, I haven't had consistent service through the whole time.
Okay.
So, what I was saying was, I, just recently I called Mr., I called the town clerk's office, actually, a couple Fridays ago, and actually got the runaround one more time, I, when I called up, I didn't explain who I was or anything, I just said, "Oh, I'd like to know, you know, can you tell me I live in Massapequa?". And then when I called back, I did mention who I was, and I spoke to Mr. Altadonna, and he explained to me that, and this is the first time since I've been living there, explained to me that the reason that there's private sanitation in the community in Nassau Shores is because our agent away requested it, and...
Home Association.
Right, right, Home Association, and I explained to Mr. Altadonna that we don't have a homeless association, that we have a civic association, and I'm actually working in conjunction with the civic association now, and by their own admission, out of the 1,530, I think it's 31 or 38 properties that are in the town of Oyster Bay, only about a third actually dues paying members, and they, they get a very small turnout up there at their, their meetings, but, in any case, what Mr. Altadonna explained to me was, back in 2014, the town, the civic association came to the town requesting that we have the town services pick up all sanitation in, in, in Oyster Bay, I mean, the town does a great job, and actually, I think they had really got excited after Superstown, because the town did a great job down there, and through my conversations with Mr. Loos, who was the president of the civic association, he explained to me that the last attempt to investigate the feasibility of the town taking over garbage, garbage collection was in April, May of 2014, the projected costs were based on the assessment at that time, the civic association requested this information from the town, there were several departments that became involved, including the officer of town attorney, the IT division, and I believe the finance department and a department of public works. I do not know exactly which department calculated the formula, we were informed that in order for this to occur, the civic association would, should deliver a petition signed by more than 50%, not of the people, but of the assessed value of the community, of the community to the town board, the civic association would be petitioning to expand the town of Oyster Bay but garbage classing district to include the area defined as Nassau Shores in the petition, it would not be switching our district to the town, which would lead one to believe that we never were a district, in theory, you needed the majority of the assessed value, not the property of the number of residents, every property owner was in favor of the town taking over garbage collection, which would require, which would be required to sign the petition. Now, I started to look at the list that was provided to the civic association, and I was paying $35 a month to Winter Brothers, actually, I just recently terminated with them because personal, personal reasons, but I was under the impression that everybody in, in Nassau Shores was paying $35, but I've been corrected since, but when I calculated the, the tax, or the estimated tax collection for the 1,500 properties, it's over $750,000. So, what I don't understand is, I mean, I spoke to Ms. Altadonna, and the civic association lost their records in, in Sandy, and he, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I went back to you.
Thank you, thank you. And, um, Mr. Altadonna got it, it's great, but up until now, I mean, I'm led to believe that I got it when I saw the book, but prior to today, we didn't know whether or not we're going to have any documents, but the point is that sometime, we decided to remove, I imagine, remove, I'll have to read, I haven't seen it yet, but I would imagine that there was an agreement that we would, Nassau Shores would not be included in a garbage district, I mean, I don't have a garbage district bill on my tax bill, I just have a solid waste disposal, okay? So, I was really dismayed that...
Can I just...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The solid waste disposal tax only covers the recycling and the infrastructure for running it landfill, period, okay?
Thanks, thank you very much. So, I was a little bit dismayed that here the town has an opportunity, I mean, I don't know how far it went back, but it was brought to their, to the town's attention in 214, we have an opportunity to recoup three quarters of a million dollars in, in tax revenue every year if we pick up our own garbage, I mean, we do a better job than anybody else.
Two digits.
I'm sorry.
From 1956, they tried to establish the district, you asked me to research this for you.
Okay.
Okay, they tried to establish the district, back then it was called the Unkore Civic Association, prior to the establishment of the Nassau Shores Civic Association, which was in 1957.
57?
Yeah. Yet, Mr. James Walsh, he was adamantly against it, they did not want...
That's okay.
...public sanitation.
I mean, who knows what was going on in 57?
But, but this is a history here, what we're trying to do, if you give us the time, because we're now up to 1959, we spent probably 150 hours to try and solve your request and get the information, it's not like anybody here is trying to hide anything.
I'm not saying that.
The rest of it, when they called the office of the clerk, and I got the runaround.
Well, I did, that's, excuse me for a second, let me just, let me just, let me just clarify this, I did get the runaround before I spoke to you, Ms. Altadonna, since, since I've been speaking with you, you, you have not given me any runaround, but periodically, and I'm not the first person that even mentioned it at this meeting today, it's, I have called, I have called to get information and I've gotten runaround.
And I appreciate that, but if you don't give me a name of the person you spoke to to give you the runaround, then we cannot address it.
Fair enough, fair enough.
So, in the future, if you have an issue with the clerk's office, and someone doesn't respond the way you think they should respond, get a name, give the clerk's office a call, and I will discuss it with them.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there is, there is no, we are here to serve, okay, we're here to serve all the residents of Oyster Bay, and if it's not being done properly, we need to know about it by name, and we need to take responsibility for it.
You know, I agree with you... You know, I agree with everything that you're saying and you might, you might not, maybe you don't remember, but about six months ago, maybe it was eight months ago, I brought your attention. I actually did a Freedom of Information request for the procedure that the town has for, I want to say civilian, a resident, to make a complaint on a town employee. And the response I got back is, you don't have one. And at that point, nobody was interested in setting anything up. But I appreciate your concern now and in the future, if I do have an issue, I will attempt to get some names and, and to, and to contact you. I'm just getting back to this issue.
Hold on, I...
Sorry, go ahead.
I hope we were hearing. I think you talked about the history here.
Yeah, still going on with the...
Can I say something? I don't mean to interrupt, but I'll, if you don't mind, I don't have, I would prefer to speak to you that, like, for instance, the history of, of, of the designation of this private sanitation thing is irrelevant to the concerns I'm addressing today. At one time or another, was it agreed upon that private sanitation would, would handle it? Obviously so. I'm not disputing that. I don't even think there's, I'd like to read it later to find out, you know, the history of what happened, but it has nothing to do with the concern I'm raising today.
Rob, I think the problem we're having, there, there are no agreements here. This is not about an agreement. I think this is where we're going wrong and where maybe the history would have helped us, but you don't hear it, believe me, we'll, we'll leave it out. I, I, it wouldn't take me, I, I believe Jim, he says he put in all those man hours or personnel hours, whatever you call them, to, I could, I could keep the incident down probably to a minute or so. Because I've been, I've been the town supervisor for a while. This issue didn't come up for the first time in two thousand and fourteen. I don't want to say it comes up annually, but maybe darn close. It certainly comes up every time you have a change in the leadership in the civic association. And every time, Johnson Cusco, I think, was the, the past president. And so the last time it was brought to my attention was through John, but it has come up many times before, many times before. There's no agreement here. The town doesn't participate in the process at all, other than to follow the law. There is, there is a, I can't, I don't memorize the entire law, but if an area of the town that is not getting municipal sanitation pickup, as you and I would call it, and they want to become part of the collection district, it is solely and wholly their choice. And the way they do it, there's a process, you know the process?
New York Town Law, section one ninety and the five sections thereafter, there's a petition?
Petition and a referendum and other areas in the town have followed the procedure and have become, become part of the, the collection district. My experience over the years with, with the Nassau Shores community has been, we've met many, many times and set forth the provisions of law that they need to make them a part of the collection district. And we've given it to them and offered whatever assistance we, they, whatever resources we have, we'll set up the referendum for you, we'll do it all. Where it always broke down, and again, this is my experience, where it always broke down is when you charge the, whoever came forward, in this case, the civic association, whoever came forward, when you charged them with the responsibility of going after getting a petition, every single time they went out for the petition, there was a very, very sharply divided community. Half the people wanted it, half the people didn't want it. And I think with the controversy that ensued, I don't, I don't believe we've ever gotten a petition back. So when, when you talk about, because I think what's at the core of what you're saying is, the town somehow plays a role in the decision as to whether or not Nassau Shores could be, and the town is trying to do something to discourage that. We don't, we don't, we don't have that power. The power rests solely in the will of the community. That's, that's all it is. It's as simple as that. And over the years, every time the community has come forward and said, we'd like supervisor or town board or councilman, who they met with, we'd like to do this, they said, great, welcome aboard, here's what you need to do. And we gave them all the documentation and we told them, we will assist that and set up the referendum, coordinate it with the board of elections, it's on us, so to speak. And it always broke down when it came time because neighbor number one wanted it, neighbor number two didn't want it, neighbor number three wanted it, neighbor number four didn't want it. And by the way, just so you know, I gotta step out for a second, but they even came forward with reasons.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat that?
They, residents would even voice reasons why they were for or against it. For example, someone whose property value is assessed higher than someone else pays a much more substantial fee for the municipal collection.
They should.
Of course. So, so they didn't want their fee to go up. Others said, hey, you know what? I like the personal touch.
You know, what?
Wait, you gotta let me finish talking.
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Other, other, that was one reason why some residents wanted it. And of course, a resident whose property value wasn't assessed, whose property wasn't assessed at the high value, they would like the municipal collection, we go, okay. That's, that's a lot. Another reason we heard is, residents would say, I like the personal touch, I've got a rapport with, you know, the, the man or woman who picks up my sanitation, hey, don't tell anybody, but they go to my back door and get it, or, you know, whatever the deal is. And they were happy and they didn't, they didn't want the, to go to municipal service. You know, government, what was the other one, the resident special? Don't have to be government, but, come on, somebody. So, a government plan, a government, government...
I'm from the government and I'm here to help.
Government is here.
I'm here from the government.
Government is never, government is never the solution, it's always the problem, that's what I was saying. And many residents have that attitude as well. So if, if what you're looking to do is to hold out guys, if what you're looking to do is to bring about the, the entry of Nassau Shores into the collection district, we're here. We'll give you the petitions, we'll provide all the backup, all the cover, we'll pick up the expense, the referendum, we'll do it all for you. But the decision is not the town, by agreement or otherwise, it's solely and wholly rests in the will of the community.
You know, if I remember correctly, in nineteen ninety, the town sued East Norwich to make it part of Oyster Bay Garbage District.
I don't know.
Yeah, I had the lawsuit at home. But in any case...
Whoa, 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 wait, you just made a statement. Bob, I want you to...
My, my recollection is that the Carter sued the town because of certain revenues that were going into the sanitation district. That came from a petition. I, I know the names of the people who actually did it. They had a vote at the East Orange Firehouse. And the residents, at the same time, based on assessed valuation of higher or lower, you know, and the fact that they had, some of the houses, that backyard pickup up there, which the town would provide, they voted it down and then it never went anywhere past that.
You see, this is important, Robert, because I corrected you earlier about this agreement business. Bob just gave you an explanation. You already went off on an inference that the town sued East Norwich and therefore there's something rotten in Denmark and something's happening and it hasn't gone. But you see, you, you, everything is built on, it's like a house of cards.
John, you say it all the time.
Well, because it's some, Robert, I, the reason I, I don't say it...
I mean, what am I supposed to feel?
No, 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 I don't say it because I have nothing else to say. I say it because it's the only thing to say, is what I'm saying to you is true.
All right, let me just move on. You know, the town has...
I feel I can do well.
Okay, great. The town has its own code on solid waste, it's chapter two oh one. Two oh one eighteen is permits required. No person in the business of collecting, transporting, or disposing any bulk of solid waste shall move any solid waste from the premises of any person upon any transport, the same due upon any street. So basically, you need a permit, they need a permit, Winter Brothers needs a permit, okay? Actually, they need to type one permit, okay? Then there's an application, it's two thousand and one dash twenty-one, the content, it explains the contents of the application. Can you tell me, do we have an application off of Winter Brothers?
No, we're supplanting.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to ask, they're required to, to post a deposit and a bond. We have that also?
I'll check.
Okay. Can you tell me, the town has the right to inspect Winter Brothers' records? Have we ever inspected their records at all?
That's a financial...
Okay, thanks.
I will get that.
Now, according to section two oh one dash twenty-seven, duty to collect, transport, and deliver recyclables. Every permittee, as a condition of the issuance and maintenance of the waste removal permit, shall have agreed to collect, transport, and deliver source separated recyclable materials generated by any of his customers who have been designated as recycling participants. I don't understand, Winter Brothers doesn't pick up our recyclables, the town of Oyster Bay does. Why wouldn't Winter Brothers be doing it? According to this, according to this code, Winter Brothers should be doing it.
So it's a contractual obligation between you and Winter Brothers, nothing to do with the town. The town has agreed to pick up the recycling.
Um, wait, wait a second.
Something to do with the other.
So what you're saying is that although the town code, as, 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 as part of their permit, okay, they're agreeing that they're going to assume the recycling aspect of the ...
You're saying as part of their contract...
No, 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 as part as their town permit.
Right.
It's a town permit. Okay, this is the town, this is the town permit. This is, this, this is their requirements, this is what they're agreeing on when they get their town permit, not, not any contract to me.
I'd like to see a copy of that.
All right.
Is there some recycling within solid waste?
You have to pass it back, like a...
There's recycling within solid waste. That part of recycling has a last offer.
All right. I'll just reread section two oh one dash twenty-seven. Duty to collect, transport, and deliver recyclables. Every permittee, that's the person that gets the permit, the garbage guy, as a condition of the issuance and maintenance of the waste removal permit, shall have agreed to collect, transport, and deliver source separated recyclable materials generated by any of his customers who have been designated as recyclable participants. Okay? Such recyclable...
Robert, hang on, that, I think that is the really important part that you just read. You just read up that last like four words.
Who have been designated as recycling participants.
So they have to have been designated as recycling participants. It's not saying that, well, maybe you are, maybe you weren't, not saying that every single person is...
I believe, I believe that at this point, every household in the town of Oyster Bay should be designated as a recycling participant. I mean, everybody has yellow cans from Oyster Bay.
But this, this section that you're reading...
I'm talking about my neighborhood, I'm sorry.
Right, no, no, I got it. But this section you're reading deals specifically with those that are being serviced by an outside vendor. So you can't say that every single person that deals with an outside vendor is necessarily designated as a recycling participant. I don't know that to be true. Do you know what to be true for that?
Okay, no, all right, all right, we'll wait till I can confirm that then. Actually, the town would designate them, right? Who also designated them, the town, right?
I'm, maybe the contractor that they're providing, I'm not sure.
Wait, I'm sorry. Are you saying that the contractor would, I'll use myself as an instance. Are you saying that the contractor would decide whether or not I'm a recycling participant?
You know, can I see the statute? I know you only have one copy, but I feel like I'm too blind a little bit.
It's a two oh one.
I want to see a definition somewhere in the code of what is designated recycling participant. Without that, I don't think...
Okay.
Yeah, the town's ready. We'll find that. Do you need this back, Robert?
Oh, please, if you don't mind.
All right.
Okay, so maybe we can, we can confirm what that definition would be.
Why don't we not know for a minute?
Okay, I'm just going to move on to the next section. It's two oh one dash twenty-nine, issuance of decal and fees. And this states that the permits required by this article shall be issued by the town clerk following review and approval of the permanent application. And upon payment of the application thereof of a fee in accordance with the schedule for below. So each permit issued pursuant to this article shall be issued as of the date of the granting thereof and shall expire on the first day of the February next succeeding date. Would you agree that these are you...
You agree.
Okay. And then, can, can you tell me, are you issuing the permits every year?
We do issue them.
To, to Winter Brothers? I, I mean, I mean, they have...
A little...
Just a second. Uh, thank you. And the only other thing I want to make you aware of is that the code calls for Winter Brothers to display the decal that you're supposed to be giving them on their truck. And at least in my neighborhood, there's no decals on any of the trucks.
Okay, we'll send that to code.
Hey, Rob, just in the interest of time...
Yes, I'm finishing up right now.
What do we have to do?
Is there, is there relief that you're seeing? Are you looking for something in particular from all of this, or is this just a recitation of...
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm...
We just bottom line it?
I'm here, well, we can't just bottom line it.
Right.
Because I'm entitled to explain it my way, I can't just, I'll do the best I can for you. Okay? The civic association, from what I understand, wants the town to pick up the garbage.
You know, you may, we're not going to argue about whether you're entitled or not, but Rebecca's question is legitimate. What's the purpose here? Where we go?
That's all, that's all I'm asking.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to find out what's, what's happened, why it happened the way it did, and how we can correct it and move on.
What we offered, Jim, Jim is sitting there poised to tell you that, you tell him, I don't want to hear about it.
I didn't say I don't want to hear about it.
But that's...
You didn't want to hear about it.
I mean, do you want me to just leave it out, tell you everything, all my concerns? Is that what you want?
I want to give you an answer. You just said you want to know how it happened, how we got here. Jim is prepared to tell you that, so why don't we listen to Jim? He, he said, I want to take the history and...
I'm sorry, John, listen, let, let me just finish without, without you being arguing with me.
Pick up the paper.
All right, I'll make it real quick, all right? Listen, this is, this, in, in a nutshell, okay? This is what I'm getting, okay? From what I was told, the civic association came to the town in two fourteen.
Who told you? Who told you?
The president of the civic association.
Current president?
Yes.
Was he a part of the fourteen meeting?
The vice president was.
Okay, the vice president.
John Secusco.
He was the president at the time.
He was president at the time, he's vice president now.
Okay.
Okay, actually, I can read his emails if you like, if you want to know what he said.
No, not really, I want you to...
Okay, so, so here's my, well, you're questioning who they are, if you want to know exactly what they said, I can read you exactly what they said.
You said, John.
So it's been conveyed to me that they came to the town in two fourteen and they said, listen, we want the town to do our garbage. Okay, and, and they were, they were given a list by the town and the town said, listen, this is a list that we compiled, this is how much it's going to cost every taxpayer if they switch to our garbage. Okay? And like I mentioned earlier...
But they asked for that information.
Of course they did, right, which, which, which I'm saying, they would ask for it and it brought, it renewed the situation in your, in the town's eyes. Okay? So, so no matter what went on here, I just don't understand why the town wouldn't be pursuing taking over the private sanitation. We're, we're, but, but we're residents and, and the, the, let me, let me just explain to you, the feedback that I'm getting from the civic association is that the town is making it difficult for them instead of, instead of embracing it, okay? My last attempts to investigate the feasibility of the town taking over with the garbage collection was in April, May, right? I find it hard to believe that the town would see three quarters of a million dollars in possible revenue from residents of the town of Oyster Bay, okay? And say, well, you know what, it was, it was an agreement made back in fifty-seven, so we can't do anything about it. I just want to bring one last item to your attention, okay? And then I'll ask you questions.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So, the reason you're here is because you are representing a civic association that would like to be brought back into the town's sanitation. Is that it? I'm just, I want to be clear. Is that what you're at? I just want to make sure I understand.
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay, so why not just ask?
I can. Well, we get, find out the mechanism to do that and start the whole motion investigation, if that's the case you want to do.
That's, that's, yeah, that's what, that's what I like to do.
Right, excellent.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, for your mental, but that's, that's the reason they were, the reason they were provided with that information is so that they had sufficient information to present the petition. Until the town board submitted a petition on behalf of an area, it doesn't have to be by the civic association, by an area, by a definite area with definite boundaries, then the town board can pass upon it, and if the town board finds it to be in the best interest, it's then submitted to a referendum by, by the residents.
Is the civic association aware of what they need to do and want to get back on?
Giving the, giving the civic association the information was the information necessary for them to submit a petition. The petition has never been submitted to the town board.
I, I, you know-
Robert, it seems like, it seems like if, if they want to get back on, there are procedures to be followed.
But it doesn't have to be the civic association. It could be a group of certain residents.
Right, absolutely. If you get a meeting together-
I mean, I want to come back on right now. You know, you know, I, I'd like to come back on, and-
I understand that.
It's a, I hope you just appreciate that it's-
Council of Winter, can I, may I, Council of Winter?
I got you.
It's New York State Town Law, like Mr. Altadonna mentioned before.
One ninety?
It's in, it's in the law. It's very clear. You all have to follow it. The civic does their, the residents in that area do their part, and then it comes to us, and then we do our part.
Okay.
That's how it works.
I, I listen, we'll address it that way. It just seems silly to me that, that the residents want to come to the town, and they, they don't have, they're not a strong association, there are not a lot of people involved. They have a very difficult time getting anything done. And it just, it just doesn't, I just want, this is what I wanted to bring to your attention, okay? It just doesn't make sense to me that, that the town could recruit all this money and revenue, but, but it's not happening because of, of the deficiencies of the operating, operation of the civic association. That's what's going on. They, they can't get it done. So, that's it.
Well, I, I don't know if I, I don't know what, and I think what really matters is the community is very divided over the issue. I think that's a, I think the civic association has tried very hard to get the job done, but when they actually go out into the streets, they find that it's a, and it's a, I, figuratively speaking, they're very sharp, violent disagreements about this issue. I, I think the civic association has not complained. They come forward, they ask, "What do we do?" We tell them, we equip them with all the information, we help them, petitions, like I said before, we're setting up referendums and stuff like that. But then when they walk into the streets, I think they find that the community is very, 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 very seriously split on this issue.
I just wanted to just give you some information. One last thing before I go. I just wanted to say that, you know, you're right about what you're saying about the, the division possibly in the community, and although we were able to get the list of what it would cost if the town did it, we're currently trying to get a list from Winter Brothers of what everybody pays, because, because nobody in the civic association has been able to look apple to apples. I mean, nobody, you know what I mean? So, great. I want to bring attention that this is out there. Personally, as a resident of Oyster Bay, I don't think anybody should be paying for private service. I think the town should be doing all of it. I just see, I just see revenue that will lose it. Are there steps to go through it that you pointed out to me? Yes, there are. So, we'll continue to work together on it, and hopefully, we can get into the town.
Okay, then Bob, I have one thing. Yeah, and Rob and I were just talking, the revenue, this, Rob, the revenue is not for free. You still have to go in there, collect the garbage, hire workers, put a truck on, dispose of the garbage, pay the tipping fee. So, we don't even know right now if it would be a profit or loss center for the town, but it's a service, and the town has always been in favor of going through it if the residents go through the profit, which sounds, like you said, a lot of red tape. It is. What the town has cooperated, and, and all the residents have to do is file this petition and go from there.
You know, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, because this came to mind also. Like, I was paying thirty-five bucks a month, and could you imagine if everybody could pay thirty-five bucks a month, like, all the overhead you just, you just mentioned? Why not switch the whole town to private and just do away with the whole sanitation thing? I mean, that, that, you know, come on. Thank you.
Doesn't work, but it's, it's not going to be a flat fee.
All right, thank you.
Bob Friar, Bob Friar, Bob Friar.